Twenty twenty-five at exactly six P M. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilman Werner.
Present.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Present.
Vice Merlangowski.
Present.
Mayor O'Connor.
Excellent. Present.
We have a quorum.
Please stand and join me in the pledge if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under one individual liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda? If not, I need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Merlangowski, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call, Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlangowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should be completed and returned to the city clerk. When you're called to speak, please go to the podium. And prior to addressing the council, state your name and address for the record. All public comments will be noted and may receive a response. Any follow-up will be handled by staff at a later time. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards?
We have one comment from Bobby, Mr. Bobby Farber.
Mr. Farber, you know the drill. Look at those shoes.
Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Bobby Farber, forty-eight twenty-nine, St. Almond's Way, Westlake Fl.
Sir.
All right, so no report because nothing's going on. All right, basically. I've given you papers that show as warranted by FPL over there. That's what it says that they're supposed to do for us as far as street lighting goes. We're talking public safety in New York City. My job was public safety. We had a no-strike clause. Street lights, traffic signals never go out. In nine eleven, two days after it went out, it may have made us go out there and light up everything that was dark because public safety is public safety. Nothing goes out. I'm here six months, you know, not a lot's getting done. I know exactly who I need to speak to for that, but my question today is going to be is to each and every council member here. Have has have anybody done anything? Have you, Mr. Mayor, done anything?
Yeah, I certainly have, hundred percent.
Okay, just I'd like to know what it is.
Sure, I've I've emailed my legislative contact with FPL directly. I'm happy to copy you on that email thread and several emails and text messages.
We get an answer? Can we get FPL down here?
I'm certainly going to try, and I'll take it one step further. Ken Castle, I'd love to instruct you to add lights to your weekly report.
Can do.
I want to know what's happened, what hasn't happened, and if you can add updates, if any, to your weekly report, that would be great.
I mean, understand, I'm not trying to, you know, make a burning star.
I happen to agree with you wholeheartedly on this issue.
I drove by Sky Cove the other night and walking in there, everything's blue. Now, this also applies to our development. There are lights that I have put in, and they're a hundred and twenty days old. And I I'll offer to be there. I'll let them in. I'll do whatever it takes to get it lit. I'm going to go online. I'm going to ask all the different sections to see what theirs looks like inside.
Sure.
Because this is just flat out right, neglect. There's zero being done. I I'm happy to hear that people are trying to do things, but they're obviously not listening and they're not doing anything. So come on, let's get a move on it with this, then you don't have to hear from me, but I will find other stuff, I assure you. Um, I want to move on to something quick. Art in public places here. I'm going to get killed for this. You put a post out about the orange with the three blossoms.
Yeah, it wasn't ready yet.
It wasn't ready yet.
Still not ready.
Gotcha. Did anybody tell the only member that was voted five to zero on here about anything, was she brought up to speed? Does she know anything about this?
Three minutes is up. It's still completely early. I was just super excited about it because it seemed to have been installed, but it's not installed yet. It's still missing landscaping. It's still missing stuff. And I'm sure we'll do some kind of very formal, you know, unveiling of it.
Would hope that.
I was just excited about it, so I put it out there for the world to see. But it was premature. I jumped the gun on it.
All right, and I'm just going to jump in something lastly real quick. I was trying to do some numbers over there, but when Ken spoke last last meeting about getting police officers here, put out a number of a hundred and sixty thousand, and I had confirmed with him sometimes.
I know the time's up.
That 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 would normally be with pensions and everything included, but the number's a hundred and sixty thousand. Based on our numbers at three thousand fifty-three we have, based on the numbers expected for next year, that kind of comes out to less than a hundred dollars per household to put two more police officers in here so that there are two at any time. So if that can, can we get that on an agenda? Can we look at that? Can we see if that's feasible, if that would be accepted by any of the families over here? Because if one if one of our police officers is giving a ticket or doing something.
Completely understood. I'm gonna I'm gonna cut you off only because it's past the three minutes, but we'll get back to her. Thank you, Mr. Farber.
Mayor, a question to the city manager.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the lighting issue, is there any way we have funding that would go to FPL that can be withheld until they take care of these issues that have been coming up?
Yes, Sid can stop paying their bills.
Up to the individual property owners?
No.
I'm talking about the city.
If it's if it's behind the gate, it's an HOA issue. HOA and FPL have to work together on those. If it's on the main roads, it's Sid. Sid can put pressure on them by not paying their bills if they don't get them fixed.
So I'm asking if we're at that point, I would suggest we start doing this.
I think we need to do something because it's enough. I've sent emails. I've sent emails.
I will take it up with the Sid board and have a meeting with several of them tomorrow.
I know we G I S met it. We know exactly where every single one is.
They have to put numbers on the polls too, which they're neglecting to do, so we can't hold any better.
And Mayor, just one one point regarding the three minutes. Once a speaker is at that point, would you maybe poll the council to see if we would allow them to continue on? Otherwise, we run into conflicts with other residents who aren't given three minutes or want to go over, and we don't allow them. At least we have an opportunity on the council.
That's a city attorney question. I was under the impression I had the discretion as mayor to allow someone to finish a thought and not make them stop mid-sentence, but.
How you wish to proceed with the public comments is a council decision. Mayor, you've been very cooperative in affording people the professional courtesy. I would respectfully suggest to the entire council that you afford the resident, the constituent, the opportunity to speak for three minutes uninterrupted.
I got it.
I think that.
The back and forth is what eats up some time.
Yes, sir, that that.
That makes sense.
Respectfully.
Right, and then if I have some responses afterwards, I can make my response.
Yes, or or council members at a later date in the meeting if you want.
Perfect.
If you do it in such a fashion that you don't interrupt the street, you have uniformity with the three minutes.
That's fair. Okay. Uh, any more public comments?
There are no public comment cards, Mayor.
There's a hand up in the audience.
Please. It's Torres.
Hi, everybody. Alicia Torres, five eight four seven, Whipper Will Circle. I have recently learned that the city has missed another waste management deadline. My understanding was that at the end of the fall, winter, we were supposed to submit for an RFP for Waste Management Services. And there was a lot of excitement about getting that cost down. You know, getting better service, what have you, and we we missed some kind of deadline, so this RFP did not get submitted. And I believe we also were paying a fee above and beyond our what we had to pay because we had missed some kind of pay increase the previous year, and that also had to do with the missed deadline. And I think somebody else suggested there be one of you guys, council members, be designated the Waste Management czar or something. And that I just mean that they look out for these deadlines and make sure whoever's job it really is to be meeting them meets the deadlines. So, all right, thank you.
Thanks. Do we have any more public comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay, excellent.
What about that last comment? City manager did tell us that they're doing an RFP, but I think they've extended it for waste management.
It's been extended for a year. I ripped into the city manager pretty good when we missed it, but apparently we did not have our RFP ready to go to the streets.
That is correct.
That was the term that was used. Do you want to?
Yes, and it will be going out for the contract was extended till September thirtieth of this year. Between now and then, we will have the RFP on the street.
Is there a deadline for that?
As long as we get it out and back before the end of the street and before the end of the make an award prior to the end of the contract on September thirtieth, we're in good shape.
Okay.
And that will help or impact our budget for twenty twenty-six?
Correct.
Okay.
That's September thirtieth of this year.
Correct.
Seven months from now.
Correct.
So you're saying that the responses to the request proposal will be back by September thirtieth?
Yes, we will have it back in time.
Fully awarded contract.
And awarded prior to the end of the existing contract.
Which is what date?
September thirtieth.
Okay, thank you.
Another question for that. We'll be in budget process way before that. What if the numbers are totally what we have not budgeted?
Part of the budgeting process and part of the responsibility of the manager is to understand what is the current going rates for solid waste as other supplies and services as well. What we will be doing is looking at what the estimated would be on the initial budget, and as we get closer and get the actual bids, we'll make sure that we're covered one way or the other.
Okay.
Excellent. Any other public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. We have no proclamations. Consent agenda. This section of the agenda consists of routine or administrative items that require final approval by the city council and may be approved in its entirety by a single motion. There'll be no discussion of these items unless a council member requests such, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on a future agenda. If there's no further discussion on the consent agenda, I need a motion.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Vice Merlangowski, seconded by Councilman Werner. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlangowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
We have before us S P M twenty twenty-four dash zero-two, application of Grove Market Anderson L L C, requesting a master site plan modification. City Attorney, please swear in any witnesses that wish to provide testimony.
Yes, sir. All those individuals could testify during the course of this application. Please stand and raise your right hand. You saw me swear. Tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please proceed.
Let's also go ahead and ask council disclose any ex parte communication, if any I have had.
I have not.
I'm I'm bank at Chase. Does that matter?
Doubt it.
Can you disclose who you spoke to?
With the applicant, the parcel owner, and probably anybody else who would listen about this.
Okay.
Chase Bank coming to our city, but in terms of the actual application, that's the applicant.
Okay, thanks, sir.
And does banking at Chase have any?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a presentation by city staff.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, council members, Mayor. For the record, I was near Leon, planner for the city of Westlake. Before you, it's S P M twenty twenty-four dash zero-two, master site plan modification to the Grove Market of Westlake. The applicant is seeking approval for a master site plan modification for the Grove Market Shopping Plaza. The proposal involves the creation of a new parcel by redevelopment approximately zero point seventy-three acre portion of the existing parking lot to accommodate two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square foot bank with the drive-through. The Grove Market, it's approximately in total of nine point ninety-eight acres, has a downtown mixed-use, a future land use, and a mixed-use zoning district. Some background for the Grove Market. On June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, council approved a site plan modification to allow an upgrade to the entire architecture facade. October eleventh, twenty twenty-one, council approved application twenty twenty-one dash zero-eight to upgrade the Grove Market master site plan, including landscaping, parking improvements to the parking area, dumpster enclosures. September fifth, twenty twenty-three, council approved an application to modify our parcel D to increase the previously approved square footage of building D for a one-story building of retail and medical use. On December tenth, twenty twenty-four, council also approved an application to modify the Grove Market for the building facade to accommodate a new grocery store Aldi. The subject application proposes a new parcel by redevelopment point seventy-three acre section of the existing parking lot in order to accommodate two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square foot bank with the drive-through use. The proposed bank, again, proposes a drive-through, forty years standard parking spaces will be removed and relocated. Six low-speed vehicle spaces will be relocated, leaving a total three hundred and seventy-four parking spaces for the Grove Market. The proposed building, it's a one-story, two thousand nine hundred and twenty-five square foot. The drive-through will have nine Q and spaces, bicycle racks will provide twenty-seven spaces, and a total of three hundred and seventy-four parking spaces for the overall Grove Market Plaza. Subject application complies with all the zoning district requirements. The is providing shared parking agreement and also a parking study. Again, the the required by code of this development is three hundred and ninety-five. It's providing three seventy-four, and I will get into the parking study in the next slide. For core requirement, the applicant submitted a parking study that was reviewed by city staff. The subject study determined that the peak parking demand would be three hundred and fifty-three spaces at five P M on a weekday and three hundred and seventy-four spaces at twelve P M on a weekend. Based on these findings, the three hundred and seventy-four spaces are sufficient to meet the shared parking needs of the plaza. The applicant also submitted declaration of needed control for parking, which must obtain approval from the city attorney and shall be executed and recorded prior to building permit issuance. Again, chapter A, Parking Regulations Section Two allows for development to reduce the total required parking spaces by twenty percent. In this case, would be seventy-nine spaces of the total and of which is twenty percent of three hundred and ninety-five spaces. The applicant is reducing using this section of the code and is reducing only by five point three percent. Subject application is in compliance with the city code since the amount of shared parking is only five percent approximately, which equals to twenty-one spaces. The site will have two entry points on the south side, as you can see on the slide, and has a walkway connecting to the multi-model. The proposed architecture incorporates architectural features such as stone materials, which blends with the surround development colors, schemes, overall aesthetics. The drive-through strategically was positioned on the side side of the building away from Seminole Pratt-Winnie Road, minimizing the visual impact to the to the road. That's the east elevation. The west elevation was facing Seminole Pratt-Winnie. These are the existing plaza conditions. This is where the development will be happening. Subject application was reviewed by Palm Beach County. Fire, no objections were provided. Landscape will be reviewed and is in compliance with the city code. Additional comments may be forthcoming at the time of landscape permit drainage. The bank is not increasing the impervious surface of the area. Therefore, no improvements are required to the existing stone wall facility. Traffic comments were addressed. Total trust projected for this application is not exceeded approved trips for Westlake per the development order. The planning and zoning engineering department recommended following conditions. Applicant shall contribute one percent of the building's construction cost to the city of Westlake Our Acquisition Fund prior to building permit issuance. Applicant shall execute and record declaration of unity control for parking prior to building permit issuance. And city council approval is conditioned upon the city attorney's receiving all required documentation. No permits, entitlements, or further actions related to this approval shall be issued or take effect until the city attorney has reviewed and approved the necessary documentation to the satisfaction of the city. That concludes my presentation. I believe the applicant is here also with a presentation.
We have an application from the presentation from the applicant. You could just state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, Nicole Berlin. I am at two hundred Central Avenue, St. Petersburg, Florida. I will say that our presentation is fairly repetitive to the one that O'Neal just presented. So unless there are questions, I would rather not waste the council's time.
Fair.
Do you agree with the conditions?
Yes, we agree with the conditions.
Thank you.
Do does any of my colleagues on the council have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Werner.
Wouldn't be a meeting without my question, would it?
You have the mic, sir.
First, I have a question to the planner.
Oh.
We can get him up there. On page four of the staff report, you make reference to the shared parking agreement. And that in the event of any future problems or changes in use, that it would, how would we deal with that? If there's a change, if we see that the parking is overloaded and we have continuous issues with that, how will we be able to redress that?
Yeah, the the code does address in that instance. And it should be.
It's on page four, under the development order. Or uses. Item E I or one, provide the city a means to readdress the shared parking in the event of future parking problems.
Correct.
How would we readdress that?
In that event, probably there will be city code enforcement action first, and then the applicant will have to come before the board to address any potential parking impacts that might be happening.
If I could answer that as well, if there's an adverse impact on the parking that develops subsequent to this time, staff would bring it back to the council for a review of the development order. You could revisit the development order and amend it accordingly.
Will the shared parking agreement have specific language to that effect?
So that. If that's a condition you wish to impose.
I'd like to suggest that. I mean, that's what the ordinance calls for.
Well, you don't need to repeat it in the development order, but it's in the code.
Right. Is it in the code?
That's what the planner just said.
Yes, sir, that's in that's directly from the.
I thought I just wanted to know how that would be accomplished. On page five of the staff report, you have a line there that says number of requested parking spaces is three hundred and ninety-five and the provided parking spaces is three seventy-four.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
It's not required parking spaces?
The total requires three ninety-five. It's providing three seventy-four by applying the reduction in chapter A, section two. That's allowable by code, which is twenty. They can request up to twenty percent.
No, I understand all that, but I'm asking, it says a number of requested parking spaces. Is that what you meant to say?
It says total provided three hundred and seventy-four, total required three ninety-five.
Okay, let me repeat it. It's the first line says number of requested parking spaces, three hundred and ninety-five.
Oh, I see. I see the line.
Is that a typo?
Yes.
It's supposed to be required.
Required. It's repetitive from the table.
And we amend, can we amend that in the final? Can we make that correct, that typo?
I think direct indicates.
And is that what's required by code?
Three hundred and ninety-five is required by code.
Okay, except for the twenty percent provision.
Correct.
Okay, and then who sent out the public notice for the meeting tonight?
Public notices are sent out through the city clerk or Florida statutes.
Okay, because on page eight of your report, you said it was going to be heard on February tenth. And I just want to make sure the notice was that was sent out was actually for tonight. That's a confirmation. Okay.
The legal ads were were correct.
Okay, sorry.
That's another typo.
Continuing on. On the site plan itself, the lower right-hand portion of that site plan is a table, and it reads non-conformities chart.
Right.
You saw that?
That's correct. That's an existing chart in the existing development order. The approved master site plan has that. It has a table listing all the non-conforming, existing non-conformities of the site. This site was developed in the county, and it was annexed when the city was incorporated, which had a multiple non-conformities regarding the city's code.
So this is an accurate statement, correct? So what's non-conforming about the parking lot, right?
So the parking lot, the county required different dimensions than what the city code currently allows. This site, because they're changing that section of the parking lot, is meeting the city's code. So it's not utilizing the any non-conformities.
I don't understand that.
The affected area where the bank is going to be built, the parking lot that's being affected, all the all of those changes are meeting the city's the city's code, current code, so there are no non-conformities.
But there, it says on ninety-degree parking, the width that's required is nine and a half feet. And what they're providing is nine feet. And you said this was accurate.
The, no, so the rest of the parking lot has different with dimensions. This application where the bank is changing all the parking, all the parking lots meets city's code.
Okay, well, the table says required nine and a half foot width.
Right, the table lists the non-conformities from when it was built. So at that point.
Right, so the county.
Right, so there were, at that point, there were requirements that they're not being met because they're non-conforming.
That was prior to the city's.
Right.
Incorporation.
Yes.
But you're saying they meet code today.
This development, the the affected area where the bank is going to go, all the parking lot changes, all of those parking spaces meet city's code.
So what is our parking width requirement?
Nine and a half.
That wouldn't make sense. It would have to be.
Uh-oh, have to be.
I can don't have the site plan in front of me now, but. Can't. Do outside.
The site plan shows nine-foot wide parking spaces.
Question is, what does the city's code allow for?
Right, and what he's saying in the table, he's saying is accurate at nine and a half feet.
Yeah, the the table is reflecting the rest of the development, what's not conforming on the rest of the development and not this specific site. This is specific site, again, meets city's code, and the parking, yes, nine foot.
It's nine feet. That's what they're proposing.
Right, which meets city's code.
But you're saying that in this table where it says it's non-conformities, that the parking width that's required is nine and a half feet.
Right, so that's, okay, so that's the requirement when the plaza was built.
What's the requirement today?
When the plaza was built was under the county's code.
Right, the question is, what is our current code?
Nine feet.
Nine feet.
Okay, so this really isn't accurate, is it?
Well, the death, there is, when the applicant came, did not touch this table. That's the existing development. The only affected area is this area.
And that, but I mean, you're you're sending us information, and you know, the applicant apparently brought this table along with whatever plans they have before.
I will have to, I mean, this, this, this is a, this is not sixty-degree parking. This is not ninety-degree. Ninety-degree parking is nine and a half. I mean, I'm sorry, nine.
Right.
Sixty-degree parking is nine and a half. So it's a different, different parking. So it's a different, different parking...
I understand that, that's not my...
The point Councilman Werner is trying to make is that this table should not have been included in the...
No, it is, it's...
Because of the fact that we got...
I mean, I, I would ask that in the future, you look at these plans closely...
No, we, we're comparing two different things. So this table calls for 60-degree parking and nine and a half. I'm, I'm saying the correct size of this parking lot of the bank is nine, which meets code, and that's what the existing requirement. Uh, I'll have to look at the code to see what 60-degree parking, I think...
I, I looked, and it, it's fine.
Okay.
But, but the table says these are non-conformities, and and they're showing that it's a nine and, nine and a half foot width requirement, and they're only providing nine feet, and the table is wrong.
The depth is, is different, uh, depth, it will be 19, and the provided is 16 and, uh, 16.8.
All right, let's move on.
That's different. Module width is different.
Okay, one, one last question. There's a, or two, two more things. There's a, a walkway shown, uh, near the drive-through area, and it's showing to be striped. We're getting an ordinance, I believe, at some point in the near future, um, because the council asked for it, for pavers in the crosswalks, and we haven't seen the ordinance yet. Um, I'd like to see pavers in, based on our paver spec, um, on that crosswalk. Uh, the other thing is, there's a future building shown on the plan that's not there now.
Correct.
Do you know which building that is?
Yes.
Is that building C?
Building B.
B?
Yes.
Why would they show that on this plan?
Again, this is, this is an approved development. They're modifying this development, so they have to show it.
Okay, I'd like to see that removed from the final approved site plan, because I don't want this entitlement to be misconstrued as something that they come back with later day.
Then addament has been, is there, the development order includes that building, that square foot, that 4,000 square foot.
The future building that we aren't even seeing today?
Is that the other out parcel?
It's this one here.
We already approved that, right?
Right, this has already been approved.
It's been approved?
Yes.
As what?
If you look at the table, uh, on the, on the general information, it calls for building B for retail sales or services.
And you have a, a design for that building?
That section says future, so no design yet.
That's what I'm talking about. So they're asking for this approval, I'm suggesting that be removed from the approval of the development order until we see something.
It won't be a part of the development order, I can assure you of that.
It won't? All right, um, oh, then the last, one last item, the building is a very nice-looking building on the north, east, and west elevations. The south elevation is pretty stark-looking, and I was wondering if there's something that can be done to that elevation. You know, just to, I mean, it's right in front of another building that's being constructed now.
Do you have any more questions for staff before we get the applicant?
Okay, good point, good point.
Do you have any more questions for us?
No, that's it.
Osnill, thank you. Um, I believe, uh, council's got some questions for the applicant? Whether, did, I'm sorry, did the council have any other questions for Osnill? They had one that carried out, so, okay, good. Hi.
Hello. Nicole Berlin, again.
Hi.
What do we have for the applicant?
Um, well, I will number one the crosswalk issue, I, I brought that up earlier, and then the south elevation doesn't quite compare to the other elevations, and it's facing the front of a new building that's being constructed with, I'm sure, entrances and exits, and people will be looking at that. Can that be dressed up a little?
So, um, I'm the civil engineer on this, I work on the site, I do not work on the architect's side, so I don't do the building elevations. I think it could be probably requested as a condition of the approval.
Okay.
Um, to, to add maybe some decorative facade to that portion.
Well, yeah, some, some shading or different color, you know, like...
Yeah, or, yeah, some architectural feature to it. Um, there will, obviously, as you saw, there, there's no signage currently shown on that. There will be some signage, so it'll just it up per se. Um, so that is one thing that's not really shown, that will be shown, um, but I certainly think that's within your...
Let's talk about this crosswalk first.
Yeah.
Are there any other crosswalks in the, in the entire plaza, or is that the only one?
There are crosswalks within the plaza which we were required to match, and that's what we have shown currently.
So if, if we ask this applicant to fix that crosswalk, we're going to have other crosswalks that don't match?
Okay, let's have them fixed as well.
I think we don't.
There'd be a code, we've changed code.
Why?
Didn't we talk about that crosswalk?
I mean, there, it's, um, as Osnill said, it's a non-conforming, it, it was built years ago to other standards. We're a new city now, and I think we want to establish some character and consistency between properties.
What, would it, how many crosswalks are in that plaza?
I would imagine quite a few. And just to understand the, the change in the crosswalks, you said it was, it's to brick, not stamped concrete?
Yeah, paver.
Pavers. With like a concrete band, I assume?
Can be one.
Concrete band, do you have a, uh, you said a detail was coming out on that?
Well, they, they have a, a standard, and it's, the bands are actually pavers, different colored paver as well.
I think staff's pulling up the amount, I mean, just like to know what we're looking at.
Did we agree?
And does that, if I'm not mistaken, that plaza has separate ownership, right? Like the out parcel is one owner?
There, there are, yes, there are multiple owners, um, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, this specific application is, is the same ownership, um, but there's approximately four or five crosswalks in the plaza, roughly.
Under this ownership? Under this ownership.
Total?
Total.
I don't think it's under this ownership, it's, there...
Right, no, no.
To the best of my knowledge, and I haven't done it, there are three different entities that own property within this plaza.
Yes.
So, for the record, crosswalks are probably affected by different property owners.
Uh, and that muddies things.
And they're not before this council this evening.
Well, but there is a unity of parking agreement.
With respect to one parcel before you, yes, sir.
Is this a, an existing parcel where the bank is being proposed?
To the best of my knowledge, yes, sir. No?
Uh, is it a one single, no? No, there are out parcels for the, um, the ba, uh, the, sorry, the, um, gas station that's to the north, and then there's another out parcel to the north as well. So there, it's multiple property owners, same with the new build that's being constructed for the medical use. Um, but I would say that this, the applicant is, is open to changing this to the crosswalk as requested, since this is all being brought up to the, the new code, the city's code, so we feel comfortable changing this, this crosswalk.
Does it work?
Yes, sir.
Uh, we can have them change this crosswalk.
Correct.
Obviously not, not, yeah, this, the one regarding the Chase Bank.
But, but know that, I mean, and I love the idea, we're getting a, a minty, fresh Chase Bank that's gonna bring some life into that plaza, um, and everything else will match, but we just need to make that decision, are we okay with having this one crosswalk being nice, new, and modern, and it not matching the rest?
Yeah.
And that's the...
Especially if they're willing to.
If they're willing to do so.
And you're willing to do so.
Yeah, for this crosswalk, yes.
For this specific crosswalk. Okay. Um, we can make that a conditional...
Yes, sir.
...approval?
All right, that, I'm satisfied with those.
Okay.
And then, is there additional discussion on the architectural enhancement? What is the council's...
So I actually do agree with, uh, with Councilman Werner on the south elevation. If one of those two, uh, light gray sections, one of them would be the dark to match the north elevation or the east elevation, a darker color, just one of those panels, it's going across.
A color change, yeah.
Just to match the other sides of the building.
I imagine they, they'd be...
Be more specific?
I would be very, I'm so sorry, I'd be specific in the change request.
Let's be very, if we could put it up, if we could put it on the screen, and let's be very specific about what we're asking for, so that there's no confusion down the line?
Absolutely.
Because I'm going to write it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we're talking about the south elevation.
And I want to thank the applicant for being so amenable.
South elevation.
You want it to be consistent with the north elevation?
Well, with, picture, so, right there.
Yeah, there it is.
So where the dividing line is.
The top section.
Council will have to decide, is it the top section or the one right below it, it could be the darker, darker gray block to match the top.
Personally, I would say the top.
I would agree. Yes.
Okay.
That way it alternates.
So, uh...
Would the applicant agree to that?
...with the north elevation?
Yeah, I imagine the applicant.
Okay. Because you're already using on the rest of the building, it's just that, that little section there. Okay, so it'd be the top portion.
Top portion on the north elevation.
And how do we work the crosswalk? Crosswalk to be...
Be versed to the city's standards, do you have a standard for that?
What I'm going to do, I'm working on the ordinance, I'll take the language.
Okay.
And directly, okay.
Development order.
Okay.
So it's consistent.
Good. We're good.
It's, goes rolling with the punches. All right, um, any other?
Just for the record, now the dust is settled, do you agree with these conditions?
Yes, we agree.
Thank you.
You have any other questions or comments from the council? I just want to thank the applicant for being so amenable here today, and for bringing this shiny new Chase Bank to our city. I, for one, am extremely excited about it.
Well, me too, it's where I like to bank.
Great.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Public, public input?
Yes, sir.
We are, uh, we're getting there.
Okay.
We are getting there. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. And, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on this agenda item?
Mayor, received no public comment cards.
Anybody want to talk about Chase Bank? Dr. Kaplan? Please state your name and address for the record.
Nina Kaplan, 5459 Santa Rosa Lane, Westlake. I was particularly interested in the parking questions, because I, I happen to remember at a previous meeting when we were talking about the new building going in that might have medical offices potentially, and maybe, um, I'm not remembering correctly, but we had a lot of conversations about parking spaces, and so now, once again, we're talking about reducing parking spaces. I'm in that area a lot, I use a lot of those different buildings. I get confused when I'm trying to go out with the way that it's set up now, and I'm wondering what's going to happen if each time new people go in there, they're going to ask for a modification, and there's going to be fewer and fewer parking spaces. We got an Aldi going there, that's going to draw a big crowd, I think, and it certainly is going to do more to the others. I'm just concerned about, in general, what the parking's going to look like.
Um, yeah, they, uh, apparently, I'll just quickly answer, apparently they did a parking study, and at peak hours, it was still sufficient for, uh, what they want to build, and that's the only reason it got approved.
But peak hours are not when the buildings are all built out, how do you estimate that on buildings that haven't been occupied yet or even built yet? Aldi's not there.
It's a best guess.
Yeah, it's a methodology, but...
It's a guess, it's a big guess.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to tell Chase Bank not to come, because...
No, I know.
...worried about the parking.
But if there's no parking spaces, people will go there.
Right.
Not all. Okay, thank you for your coming.
Well, if there are no parking spaces available, it means it's pretty full.
Yeah.
So I think the businesses will...
People are going there.
Yeah, right.
Please name your name and address for the record, please.
Addison Verkless, 14868 Wildwood Circle. So I just want to talk about the crosswalks.
Okay.
So just a heads up, downtown for Lauderdale had those paver i- in the crosswalks, and they ended up like twisting people's ankles, and they ended up sinking, so, just something to consider about maintenance, ongoing maintenance of those, and people hurt themselves.
Appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comments on this agenda item? All right, I am going to close the public hearing. Do you have any other comments from council?
No.
May I have a motion?
I'm of approval of site plan modification number 2024-02 for the Chase Bank at the Grove Market, as recommended by staff, with two original conditions and two additional conditions, as we discussed and as the applicant agreed to.
Motion by Councilman Werner, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner.
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Welcome to, to Westlake.
Congratulations. Chase Bank.
Finally.
We have before us the second reading of ordinance 2025-01 enacting a new city code for the city of Westlake, Florida. City Attorney, please read by title.
Ordinance by title only, and ordinance adopting and enacting a new code for the city of Westlake, Florida, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not included therein, providing a penalty for the violation thereof, providing for the manner of amending such code, providing when such code in this ordinance shall become effective.
Staff comments? Any? No? Uh, council comments? This is second reading, so we've all been through this once.
This is for the codification of the ordinances. So it's not changing any ordinances, it's putting them into a book...
Yep.
...that we all can get access to.
Adding it to newly code. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any comments from the public on this agenda item? Madam Clerk, any public comments?
I received no public comment cards.
All right, there being no further comments, I'm going to close the public hearing, and if there's no further discussion, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2025-01.
My second.
Motion by Vice Merlingowski, seconded by Councilwoman Leonard. Roll call, Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Werner?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Wonderful. No new business, moving on to city council comments. Councilwoman Leonard?
Uh, I'd just like to ask if we could, um, maybe consider a proclamation for the International Women's Day in March for our next meeting.
I'll consider it, I love it. What do you guys think?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you.
Councilman Werner, any public comment today?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm now at one year, at my seat here on the city council.
Congratulations.
I, I've enjoyed the service here, I look forward to serving out my term. As you all know, I served 45 years as a city planner for both cities in private consulting firms in California, and serving many high-end cities, many of which are referred to as contract cities, just like we are. I wouldn't feel that I'm doing my job if I didn't voice my concerns on matters coming before the council, as you all already know. Uh, I recognize that I'm one of five members of the council and at least two others on this panel would have to agree with me on what I'm proposing. I have now been a participant in the operations of Westlake for the last year. And when I first joined the council, I said to myself, I'm not going to make any suggestions until I tested the waters and felt how it was. So I, I do have a couple of suggestions that I hope I can get council support. First, regarding the city's charter, there are portions of the city charter that relate to the transitional city council, which is no longer relevant. At the time of the charter's preparation, I'm told by the city manager that there were five residents of Westlake who were consulted during its preparation and approval. Today, our city is, has a population of approximately eight thousand residents. I propose that the city council appoint a blue ribbon committee to publicly review the charter and make recommendations to the city council for any charter amendments. My first suggestion. Secondly, I have noticed that there are errors and omissions or oversights coming from our contracting staff members. Some of which are found at the city council level and others that occur after development orders are issued. As a member of the city council, I've done my best to catch them and seek corrections. We can benefit from more eyes and time on proposals and city business to review development projects to make sure all of our city codes are properly addressed. To that end, I propose that the city council agree to place on the next agenda for further discussion, the appointment of a commission, call it a zoning board, a planning commission, to serve as our local planning agency to make recommendations to the city council on an update to the comprehensive plan and to review and recommend development orders. I'm requesting that the council direct city manager to place both proposals onto our next regular meeting agenda for discussion and action.
Um, okay, is. Uh. Counselor is, how, how does this get addressed? Is that?
You could have a discussion on the suggestions from Councilman Werner.
Okay, let's have a discussion. Um. I'm not entirely opposed to anything that you've proposed. Um, I'd like to know more before we start creating committees in term, especially what would the cost to taxpayers?
I agree. I agree.
That would be my first question. Second suggestion, just my gut feeling, is, you know, the charter itself is like the constitution of the city. It's, it's the, the document and the fabric and the rules that we're founded on. I think that this, uh, forecasting, this envisioning that we're going to be taking place in.
Oh, the strategic planning.
Strategic planning. I think it's important that we identify as a group what we all think is broken before we go creating committees to go try and fix it. So I, I mean, I would certainly think that we need to figure out what parts we might want to change, if any, before we go. Definitely want to know how much it's going to cost, for one, but also I think this strategic planning needs to happen first. And that's going to be a great opportunity where we can just talk about it. Because otherwise we can't talk about it. Uh, that's one of those moments where, you know, unless we schedule a workshop or something like that. But I, but I think the strategic planning is going to be a great opportunity for us to.
I agree with, I agree with you on that.
Anything we'd like to change and adjust. Um. So that's my personal thoughts on it, but like I said, I, I, first of all, happy anniversary.
Oh, thank you.
From being on the council. Um, I couldn't agree with you more in terms of the errors and the omissions and I've caught some, I've caught some major ones.
Sure.
Um, and I think staff needs to do a better job. I don't know if we need to have a whole committee and spend a ton of money in catching those errors where if we could just get staff to do a better job and catch, you know, there's, there's things. But that's just my opinion and, uh, I'd love to hear what my colleagues on the council think about it.
Okay. I also concur with the mayor about waiting. I know it's June is when they, but you know, the, you'll go to the community first when they're, with their, their listening session. So I would ask, perhaps we could have Dr. Sugarman raise those questions to the public when they have their.
Yeah, that's what's.
Their flower session, that they ask the residents how they feel about that.
Or maybe to identify.
Will come back to us in June when we actually meet and I'll be saying, okay, all, all these citizens believe we should be doing this. So that'll help with crafting. But I'm not opposed to everything, like you said, so.
Well, all I'm asking is to put it on agenda so we can discuss it. We, we, we don't really have a chance to discuss anything unless it's in a public meeting.
But well, the, uh, we have the strategic planning where we're gonna have Paul Powel.
Totally agree with you on that.
Cause there might be other things that we're gonna, will come to light that we need to change.
And I, and I love having the public.
Target review.
I love your point about having the public's input first, cause that, that will guide. It shouldn't be what we want. It's really what they want.
That's, that's what I'm asking for.
I agree. Um, just to your point, I think we came up with the strategic plan in response to our initial request to review the charter. So I think, you know, down that same path, let's get the strategic plan out of the way. Let's go through that process. Identify what the areas are, and I think it will allow us the opportunity to have that conversation that you're asking for. So it got pushed out, but I think we're all in agreement that we need.
Meanwhile, I don't think it's a bad idea. Uh, Ken, can you start looking into what some of these committees potentially could cost? I know that there was a lot of, uh, review funds spent when the, this was all created prior to my time, but I don't know how that, what a committee like this would cost the taxpayers.
It'd be a volunteer committee, like a, a resident committee, volunteers.
They would both be volunteer committees.
Could, could, could I comment for that?
Sure, please.
Could, if I can, I'll comment on both subject matters, help you respectfully. As to a planning committee, typically traditionally is planning the zoning board. It's a board created pursuant to your code of ordinances. It acts as a early review body that can make recommendations to the city council based on applications. Generally is advisory in nature. However, you can empower it to grant variances, certain subject matter. It's subject to the public sunshine law, requires minutes, agendas, and you'd have to hold it in this particular room. And I would strongly advise that you create it pursuant to the code. So you outline their authority, their powers, and you would then, your appointment process, it's all in the code board system.
Mm-hmm.
As to a charter board, that's a traditional process undertaken in Florida to periodically review charters. Same thing, you would appoint a charter board, generally five members, seven members. You may give them direction. But they would come, review the charter, come back with recommendations. Under Florida law, the process would be you would have to entertain the recommendations in the form of an ordinance, adopt the ordinance on two readings, and then submit the, the particular question to referendum. So you cannot approve necessarily an amendment to the charter, but you would act on, you may get ten recommendations from your charter board, but you may only agree with five.
Right.
And you submit them to referendum and only two may pass. But that's traditionally how charters are viewed.
And so that the cost to the, the taxpayers, the cost to the public would be the cost of the city's staff to support these.
You need, you'll, you'll need a lawyer there. You'll need a city clerk there. You'll need minutes. It's a public hearing.
Okay. So if we could, Ken, if we could do some kind of homework, at least for our strategic planning, so that I have an idea what this is going to cost and what kind of budget line items we would need.
We'll work up some ballpark, uh, figures on the cost and timing.
Okay.
Um, Councilman Werner, I'd ask that you also send your letter to the manager, uh, so he can, um, add that information to Dr. Sugarman.
Oh, mean what I read?
Yeah, uh, yes. Cause you have key things that can be.
Okay, sure.
Excellent. Okay. Uh. Vice man.
Um, two requests for consideration is from the Palm Beach TPA Transportation, uh, for everybody to know that. March is, uh, Florida Bike Month. We've done a proclamation last couple of years. They're asking for us to come back with another one.
I'm sure.
Yep.
Anybody opposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm so.
The second one's from Palm Beach County for Let's Move Palm Beach County Digital Lives. They're also requesting a proclamation on behalf, we did one last year as well.
Okay.
Yes. And then the education advisory board, we have a member position open and an alternate member position open. Um, so we're seeking residents to join that board. Um, our next meeting is in April. And then I did want to ask since, uh, Councilman Julian's not here anymore, but what was the outcome of the five K race? Um, as far as expenses and what was brought in?
Dollar amount.
Because the money will be donated or anything extra to a local school, but the committee will come back to the board with the school that is selected for approval.
The, um, the numbers are not finished yet. As far as the five K, we haven't got all the bills and invoices in yet. We'll be doing that reconciliation in next week or so.
Okay. So we'll have it by the March.
Yeah, we're gonna have it by the March.
Okay, that's it.
Um, I want to take a moment, even though he's not here, I want to thank Julian Martinez for his years of service. Um, I hadn't had the opportunity to reach out to him. In fact, it wasn't until I sat down here today that I realized that I could reach out to him. Um, which I'm absolutely going to, but I, I just want to publicly thank him for his service, thank him for, for, for serving on this council, for being one of the first actual residents to serve on this council.
Why don't we get him a proclamation?
I, I would love to do something special for, for Julian Martinez, Councilman Martinez. Um, and then while we're, so yes, I thank you, thank him. Um, if he's listening, thank you, and let's definitely, uh, do something for him from the city. And also, that's a perfect segue to talk about what happens with his seat, um, publicly. So, Ken, do you want to fill us in? His seat's vacated. I know there's a provision in the charter. We have a certain amount of time to fill it. Um, I'd like to start seeing the applications. I know it's an appointment. Do you want to just quickly outline, at least for the public, how, uh, how we plan to bill Councilman Martinez's seat?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, the charter requires that if it's two years and eighty-one days, um, or less, then it's an appointed position. And that was where we're at at this point in time. Um, his resignation was effective February first. I want to confirm with council that they are okay with having a special meeting on February twenty-fifth to appoint, since that fits within the thirty days of a special meeting. And what we would, it has not been published yet out to the public that it would be open, but the, what the item would be is we would be publishing tomorrow. And that the deadline would be for February twentieth, for someone to submit a letter of interest and their resume to the city clerk, who would then forward it to the council for review. The council would individually review the applications. And at the meeting on February twenty-fifth, as a council, one individual would be selected.
So you're talking about a deadline on the twentieth?
Yes.
Special meeting on the twenty-fifth?
Correct.
I can do the twenty-fifth. That's not an issue. I will say that, and unless, uh, the city attorney says I'm not allowed to, I would love to sit down with the applicants personally and speak to them. Um, but I'm going to say that if you wait until the twentieth and that's the deadline, there's a good chance I'm not going to be able to meet with you because it's only five days until the meeting and, you know, I've got two kids under four, but.
You're not the only one that would want to meet with them.
Right. I'm talking about me specifically. I don't like to talk about me.
Right, and I'm in the same position.
That being said, I would advise anybody who's interested, um, in a possible appointment, to get the application as soon as possible so that I could sit down and meet with them. Um, because if you wait until the deadline, there's a good chance I won't be able to.
So do we have to all agree on a date, February twenty-fifth? Correct. We need to have a special, we have to have a special meeting within thirty days. Twenty-fifth is the first date that we can get here, that we have an opening here in the lodge.
Is locked in.
So six o'clock? That would be correct. Okay. And it'll be a public meeting? Yes. Special council meeting. Special meeting, right.
And we're going to put the word out tomorrow morning?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna ask, is Alicia still here? No? If she's listening, I'm gonna ask Alicia to also use her platform to get the word out.
And, and Madam Clerk, would you explain the process of the application and the other part that has to be sent in?
There will be an application, the board application, available on the website, along with resumes that would be submitted. But I don't know that I received clarification on mayor's request about meeting with applicants. Am I sending, as we get applications, am I sending them to council?
Please do.
Yeah.
We have to find out.
Not, not collectively, but individually. So you are able to meet or talk on the telephone.
Okay.
With individuals who are either interested or have even applied. Some may not even want to apply, want to talk to you first. You can do that.
Okay, excellent. Yes, so please, if we can instruct staff, um, Madam Clerk, anybody who's either interested or has submitted a resume or filled out the application, if you get that to my email inbox as soon as possible, along with their contact information, I would want to, I would want to sit down with everybody who's interested in the position. Um, but like I said, if you wait until the last minute, which is only four days or five days before the meeting, I may not be able to. So sooner the better.
Want to?
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you can decide at February twenty-fifth meeting the procedure.
Okay.
You may have twenty applicants, maybe only afford them five minutes. You may have two applicants and afford them twenty minutes.
Got it. So based on whatever the, whatever the, uh.
Interest.
Got it.
But all applicants.
Start on that day, we'll make the decision.
Right, and all applicants should understand they're filling the unexpired term of Julian Martinez, which I believe.
Twenty-six.
March twenty-sixth.
Right, one year.
So approximately one year, yes, sir.
Good. Excellent. Um.
And just so, you would make the appointment that evening and it'd become effective. So the individuals would be subject to the sunshine law and public records before they leave this building.
Excellent. That should be. Uh, let's move forward with staff reports. Uh, Mr. City Attorney.
I've spoken too much today.
Mr. City Manager.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, a couple of house cleaning, uh, items to be brought to the council. Um, confirm that, uh, per our last direction of the council, April fifth was scheduled for Spring Fest. Just can reconfirm that date. Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah. That would, it had to be that day because of.
Because of the other timeframes and other issues. I just want to confirm that. Um, the strategic planning community engagement meeting has been moved from February twenty-second to May twenty-fourth. Uh, that is the one where uh, consultant will meet with the residents in this building at that point in time, that four and a half hours. Um, the other issue is the March council meeting. Needs to be moved. The only time that we can get in March to move it back, because y'all are in and out of town, would be Thursday, March twentieth. If we cannot do that. Yes, March twentieth. It's the only date that the lodge is available.
Okay.
Tuesday, Friday.
Yep.
Is everybody good for that?
I don't know. Let's go with it. I don't know.
All right.
Um.
So we'll schedule for March twentieth, for the March meeting.
We'll have a new council member. Right?
Hopefully there's applicants.
Six P M. Okay.
Mayor, if I may also just add, that same meeting date, there will also be a local planning agency meeting prior to.
So five, or five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
Got it. Thank you for that, L P A. Okay. Anything else, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, that's all I have at this point in time.
Thank you, sir. Please, please add those FPL lights to your weekly report.
And withhold payments.
And instruct your counterpart over at Sid to withhold payment. Um.
Sheriff's.
Yeah, let's do, uh. Sheriff's Department. L T, we haven't done public comment yet. We're not there yet. Still on staff reports. New cat?
Good evening, yes. Um, Lieutenant Sowers, Palm Beach County Sheriff's Office. Uh, here with me is Captain Robert Sant. Um, we've had a change in our command staff within the agency and Captain Turner will be, um, joining the city of Green Acres. And Captain Sant will be joining us here in Westlake, um, Loch Tahatji Groves and, um, also the acreage. I'm gonna let him speak, but just before he does, I'll, I'm gonna give you a quick report and, um, if you have any questions, we'll address those at the end. Um, for the, uh, for the monthly report in January, deputies conducted nine hundred and four residential and business checks. Um, traffic stops were at a hundred and seventy-nine and calls for service were a hundred and sixty-eight. Um, we did listen to the residents last time and, um, you know, have been increasing our traffic efforts and traffic enforcement. Um, for the month of January, we had a one burglary to a vehicle, which was at the Seven-Eleven. It was an unsecured vehicle. They ran in and left their doors unlocked and purse was taken. Also had, uh, three, three thefts. Two of them were of e-bikes at a bus stop and that was, uh, actually, um, done by two juveniles, which, uh, were caught and the e-bikes were returned.
Right.
And then, um, you had two vandalism. One was of a, a construction resident, a residential home and, um, also, uh, was one, somebody's tire was deflated. So.
Incidents are picking up.
Yeah, a little bit, a little bit. Um, but, uh.
Let's send a loud, clear message that Westlake is not to be trifled with.
I agree, sir.
And that's, uh. And that's, uh...
The weather warmed up.
Yeah.
Well, summertime is coming. Summer will be coming up too. Uh, that's when it gets really, uh, the kids get antsy. Um, but, uh, but the deputies have been, have been stepping up with the traffic enforcement. Uh, I know that was a hot topic last month and it's a hot topic for us every month. And we, we understand it's a huge concern. So we will continue to, uh, keep the heat up on, in that area. Any, uh, questions for me before I let, before Captain Sant takes over the mic?
Thank you.
Captain?
Mr. Mayor?
Captain, welcome.
Crystal, uh, okay, don't turn my back on... You're saying back to residents?
Absolutely.
Well, well, if you...
No, I grab...
We will watch your back.
Uh, my name is Rob Sant. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you please, uh, grab the mic? You can, you can remove it from the stand.
It's okay, it's okay. Can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
My name is Rob Sant. I am a thirty-four-year veteran of law enforcement. And every day's been a pleasure. It really is. And, and I'm not lying. I swear. I, it's been a pleasure. It's been my honor, my, my privilege to serve this community, these communities within the county thirty-four years. Started off in a little town named Palm Springs. Ever hear of Palm Springs?
Sure.
Not California. Palm Springs, Florida. And listening and being here tonight, uh, and listening to the council and, and the small-town flair of how everything just gonna start working, brings back a lot of memories. It really does. Here's one of the things I'll tell you, just, and, and for the sake of brevity, I know a lot of you guys are tired and wanna get home. But what comes with great change often brings some growing pains. Right? It really does. So I ask all of you to be patient with me. I'm changing into a new command. Uh, I've spent the last seven years in West Area Beach, servicing over about forty-five thousand residents and about thirty-eight square miles. My history in the sheriff's office goes from TAC, uh, SWAT, you name it. One of the biggest things I've learned to prepare me for this position and the other positions I've had within leadership here was community policing. Community policing, small-town community policing. Cause you could take that formula and some of the, just, uh, the strategic planning that we spoke of tonight, you can just take that formula and you could put it anywhere. So that is gonna be my posture here as your new commander. That strategic planning. Lieutenant, uh, Sowers has a fantastic job. Captain Turner did a great job. We've, we've worked together for many years. But we're gonna do that. We're gonna take a look at it and we're gonna do that community policing style that you I's all deserve.